Good evening, everyone. It is March 2nd, 2021. It is 7:30 PM, regular City Council meeting of the City of West Liberty, Iowa. I apologize if it seems like I'm yelling, but I just really can't. I'll just go ahead and stuff this down a little bit. I hope that's better, so it doesn't seem like I'm yelling. Roll call. We have all council members present tonight. Lee Gertz, City Clerk, present, and also interim City Manager Elizabeth Hansen is on Zoom tonight. Do I now have an approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion, group, second.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes by zero. We have a public hearing in front of us, and this is the public hearing on the property sale at 505 East First Street and 115 East Third Street.
Motion, open, public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Rock? Yes. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Do we have anybody on Zoom that's here for the public hearing to reference the sale of those two properties? Hearing none. Lee, do we have any public correspondence to reference these two items?
The only public correspondence we had is your bid information that's attached to the resolution.
Okay. And did any of the council members have any words comments about this matter?
Yeah, Mr. [inaudible]. Motion closed, but public hearing, second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
The public meeting is closed, public hearing. So we are on to the Resolution 2021-03-02-06, and that's referenced the Resolution for the sale for 115 East Third Street.
Motion, group, second.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Passes by zero. And we have the Resolution for 505 East Third Street, and that is dash zero seven. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Motion in a second. Is there any questions, discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Passes by zero. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight, and that is the council meeting minutes for February 16, 2021, and work session February 23, 2021, the city clerk slash treasurer's report for December of 2020, and setting a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022 budget, and that date is March 16, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second has been made. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes by zero. Council, we have a vendor voucher claims list in front of you tonight, and it's in the amount of $271,644.23.
Motion, second.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes by zero. Public comments and correspondence. Is there anyone on Zoom that has any public comments or correspondence for the council? Just to kind of let you know we're not taking any action or have any immediate meetings, reference the fire department outside of the 2018 agreements that we need to make with the Royal Board of Trustees and that, so I just wanted to make that clear that there's nothing on the agenda tonight. If that's, if anybody's there for public comments, I would ask that, do you have any public comments? Wait until the council passes on the agenda. Anybody have any other public comments? Lee, can you make sure that they're raising their hand or...
Yep, I'm...
...or... ...or something. I want to make sure that...
So I don't have anyone raising their hands for a stating that they want to communicate with the council.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start. Councilmember Brown, do you have any public comments? All right. Councilmember Zacharys?
Nothing new to that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McFerrin?
Nothing new in relation to what we don't already have, although I do have one thing. I was speaking at Fire Department, but I do have one thing outside of that. There's a street light apparently that's out on North Short Street. It's the Chippewa Light that's, I think, the only, the last one on the west side. I believe one of the residents on Short Street notified me.
We'll set a service request, Councilmember McFerrin, for that tomorrow.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rock? None. Lee, do we have anything, public comments related that the city's received?
Mr. Mayor, I have provided correspondence on your desk through emails and within regards to questions about the fire department, and that is the only correspondence that I've received.
Okay. Anything outside of Fire Department related stuff?
No.
Okay. And you? Interim City Manager Hansen, any correspondence outside of Fire Department related stuff?
No, I collaborated with Lee on giving those to you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are on to new business. We have a few resolutions in front of us. We did have a work session on two of those. So the first one though is Resolution 2021-03-02-8, and that is a resolution awarding the police and City Hall project.
Motion.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have Tara or Tara Goldsberry on here, so I didn't know if anybody had any questions for Tara, or if Tara wanted to make any comments with regards to the bid. Hi, Tara.
Hi. Hello, everyone. I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay. I knew, you know, it looked like there was two bids. Is that correct? Is that only two bids?
Correct.
Correct. Oh, I couldn't tell if that was me or you.
So there is only two bids, and I think the $400,000 is coming out of...
The bond proceeds.
Yeah, and then the 41, the rest of it would come out of the voucher sales tax.
Correct.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that any citizens were watching just kind of a little bit about where that's at. Okay, is there any other questions for Tara or any discussion references?
Is there a start date on this, Tara?
I think that we need to go through the contract with the general contractor. Lee, was the date set yet, or?
No, I, as I understood, we would said a construction meeting.
Pre-construction meeting.
Yes.
And review with the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Passes by zero. We do have the Resolution dash zero nine in front of us. This is approving communications plan.
Motion.
Motion in a second. This is one of the items that we had a work session last week on. Is there any questions, any concerns, discussion, reference, communication plan? Hearing none. I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Passes by zero. Resolution dash one zero is approving social media policy.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Passes by zero. And the last rest of, not the last one, but the one in this group is amending the computer-based systems policy disaster recovery plan and electronic communication policy.
Motion.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? This one, I think, is kind of important to just kind of give you a basis of why some of, some of these different policies are important is that Nicky had talked about, without having a policy in place, we really can't enforce like password security, password vulnerability, and with this, it'll make employees have to keep a certain, you know, password that has certain characteristics that will keep it somewhat secure, as we know, or nothing is completely secure. But he said we're gonna give us the opportunity to make sure that our systems are as secure as possible. Okay, I'll go ahead. Go around. Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Passes by zero. We have Resolution dash 12, which is the paid-for performance evaluation for salary range and matrix for management and non-management employees.
Motion.
Second. Motion in a second. So I'll go ahead and start the discussion and just kind of explain. There's some confusion with this, I think, from members. They told that there's a fire chief listed in this matrix. This is not a document that there's any decision from the council. The council, as, you know, we have stepped back, we're taking steps, and we're arranging to have meetings with different entities, and so that has not been discussed. Also, if you would look in the matrix, you'll see that it also shows a quote-uniform building inspector, which we don't have either. So if the council hasn't approved certain job classifications, even if it's in a matrix plan, that's not a, you know, we're not voting on positions towards the city. We're voting, voting on a matrix for job performance, not jobs and not creation of jobs. One of the big issues that I've always looked at when you, when you look at city government sometimes is you have cities that will just give a cost of living, and let's say it's 30%. Well, 3% of the city manager, 3% of the electric superintendent, the police chief, the, you know, different, all the departments, when you just give a blanket 3%, well, when you, there, there's a ordinance, the police officer, the, you know, line, and just, well, 3% is higher for somebody that's making a larger salary. So over the years, the supervisors get a bigger gap than, you know, there's a bigger gap between the head of departments and, and also the workers there. So this is one system that is to kind of alleviate and not create such a big gap.
Mr. [inaudible] here, the school district uses a system we're talking about, and I believe this is unfair because of the explanation in this case. Some people perform better than others, and she will reward the same percentage.
So I just want to double say that this is not a job creation, or we're not voting on any jobs. This is more the matrix and the pay scale and performance evaluation. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Passes by zero. Resolution dash 13 is a resolution approving amendment to the Economic Development Program Application Guide.
Motion.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion, questions, concerns?
Mayor Prochan, Veronica, did you want to...
Explain why, why this is on here? I thought this stuff that we've... When we receive applications for one building and more than one application that exceeds $25,000, I brought up with Elizabeth and Lee about limiting the 25,000 max that we've set to one building. So if they have multiple projects going on in one building, they, they, if it's less than 25,000, they can apply. But if the max for that building is more than 25, 25 is our max. So I wanted a clarification in here that it was per building, not necessarily per project within the building. And so that's why this is benefited to, to save per building for properties.
And I think that's only fair to spread some of the, the project money around so that everybody...
Because we only have, what do we have per year that's talking about?
100,000.
20,000. So this way it spreads it out, you know, if this is extra 25,000, then we know in all four businesses. But if someone will ask for probably as much, then we can know more.
Any questions, concerns, reference to this change? Okay. Councilmember Zacharys?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passes by zero. And so we are down to G, which is discussion, proper follow-up on the Economic Development Program Application, and this is from WLFD LLC, and this is for 103 East Third Street, and it's in the Mount LeFond type house.
Motion.
Motion, second. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Zacharys? Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Passes by zero. Next item on the agenda is update on proposed projects and programs scheduled and strategic planning and goal-setting action for fiscal year 2023 through 2022.
Mayor, I just wanted to provide you the two documents every quarter and, and provide you an update. So really, we don't need a motion from council. It's just really to draw attention to these documents. They didn't get lost in any kind of report in the end of the packet. So if you could see, there's really just very little work that is, that is required. Well, I shouldn't say little work, little items, lots of work in the last quarter of my contract. And then there were some things that were outstanding after July into the next year. So other than that, you're on track with all of your goals, and, and you've accomplished, I think it's four out of six of them. And, and then there's other, the two that are remaining are slotted for, yeah, this next, this next year, this next fiscal year. So on track with those, and then I would probably suggest that you have your next retreat, you know, sometime in the fall, so that you can, with your new city manager, and you can get focused on your next, your next go-around, your next goals. So does anybody have any question about anything there? And when I do my report, I was just going to highlight a few of those items too, so.
Thank you. Is there any question? Preference of the title or anything for this? This is pretty good, I think. But a big, big agenda in front of us for the last year. Okay, we're on, you said in the dates of the work session, and this would be March 16, and this is for utility rate studies for water, wastewater, and stormwater.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to have that at 6:30 or...
I would refer that to Diane.
6:30 to 7:45 minutes. Will that be enough time?
Um, I would almost go and...
Lee, I think I had on the tentative at 6.
Okay.
Um, because they're going, oh, I, maybe it was, I think it was 6, 6 or 6:30. Um, I'm sorry, I should, I could pull that up real quick for council.
The notice, Elizabeth, was 6 to 7:15.
6 till 7:15. Yeah, I think that's, um, that was for, you know, last time we talked to Leo, I thought that that's what he wanted, was at least a good hour and a half to go over the utility rates with the council. Unless, I suppose, the utility board or committee members don't think it'll take that long. And then that's up to, that's up to you.
What do you think? How, do you think it'll take an hour? I think, for the time, that it will be four. I think 6:30, it would work, even an hour, 6:30. We're gonna go for 6:30, so Leo will have to really convince it.
Okay, so March 16 to 6:30, the reason why I have a big burn to Diane is because I will be on vacation and not here. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So it's at 6:30. Let's move you on to your reports. City engineer, is Leo up there?
I don't have Leo, I do not have Leo on.
Leo's on vacation.
Oh, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. So we will scratch the city reports. Let's go ahead and we have, if we're not to list it, I mean, in order, received and filed the fire department's reports, and also interim city managers is two singles. Does he want to, is there any highlights or anything? I thought I saw his name on there, but I wasn't sure.
Oh, I don't have anything else to include, Mayor, only to thank Dave for our conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go. Interim City Manager Hansen, any, anything else besides your report?
Um, just the, wanted to highlight a couple of those items that were on the program schedule. So we're getting started with the city manager search coming the 16th of March. We'll try to meet with the Personnel Committee to look over the schedule for the city manager search. And then we also, the, at the same time, the Public Safety Committee is doing the same for the police chief search. So those are going to be underway come April. And then I'm not sure if Nick is in, is present. I don't see him on the call. But he is getting ready to send out the RFP for the website, so that's going to be a big project. And then there's two different residential subdivisions that are in the works, I guess you'd say, or at least the conversations are, are, they were had in the last two days. So that's very exciting, and so with that, I will be updating the Economic Development Committee very soon. I am out of the office until the 16th, so I just want to wish everybody well and happy spring.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for interim City Manager Hansen? Hearing none. City Clerk's report?
I just had, just gonna give a quick verbal report with regards to our transition over to the WEE building. Has gone smoothly, and I'd like to thank City Clerk Sherry Hawker and Utility Clerk Ray Blain and Account Specialist Rena Garcia for their hard work in organizing and making this so smooth. There was a lot of work behind it, and they took the lead and was able to accomplish this pretty much in two days, moving an entire operation to another building. I also, thanks to Nick Heath's department, Cobain-Polman, and even Beerman, they were the muscle behind moving a lot of the furniture and the equipment, and also being patient with the City Hall administration staff and putting things where we wanted it, three or four times, moving it. So we appreciate that. I'd also like to say thank you, Nick Heath, for an excellent job. He had some assistance from Josh Jackson, but for the most part, Nick championed this whole project of moving the IT service himself, and again, he did that less than 24 hours and had us up and running. And we were able to open the doors and serve customers then right away on Friday. The only other thing to add to the, the move of City Hall is that we're currently accepting Dropbox payments for the City Hall, and there is the Dropbox payment box located at Casey's. We have a, a new Dropbox on order to be located in the front of the WEE building in the right away next to the light pole out there, so it won't affect, you know, too much room on our sidewalk. And when that happens, we'll communicate to the public that they can drop pop payments there, because due to the construction at City Hall, we want to be able to accept payments there. But we will keep the community posted on when that happens. And then the next piece, again, our staff has been busy working on annual electric reports, the rate study information going over to the engineers. And the other thing we have coming up next week in regards to nuisance is we have a court date on March 11th at 10:00 AM with the Olson versus the City on that nuisance. Outside of that, I don't know if you have any other questions. No?
Any questions? Let's move on to the electric superintendent. Is Ed with us tonight?
He is.
I have, any, anything outside of your report, any, anything that's key they want us to know from the council's perspective?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Man, a few words?
I would like to ask Ed how long we did generation for the grid last week? Was it last week or the week before?
Yeah, we generated 16 hours a day for four days.
Four days, and then that all goes back on the grid for, to help other areas, is that right?
Yeah, it went, it went, we back on the grid for down south since they had that ice storm.
Okay, I just wanted, I think it's important to note that for the citizens here.
Sure.
Great, we'll do that.
And we've done that on summers that have been really scorched years, we generated for the summer. And the biggest thing was we generated our own power this summer. When the grid was down, or lines from the grid was down, we were able to close our loop and do power. So that's a great system and appreciate the work, Ed.
Yep.
Okay, let's go ahead and do... Okay, let's go ahead and go streets. Mr. Reinhardt, anything for the streets?
Uh, no, tired of moving snow, and I'm hoping it's done.
Don't change us.
Do, do, do we, uh, have any idea how many pothos we're gonna have to repair? Have you thought about that yet?
Can you say that again?
About pothos? Do you have, have we thought about repairing how many?
Uh, yeah, there, there's a few of them, but we can't get asphalt until beginning of April, so.
Uh, we definitely want to make sure we're done.
We have some stuff we can use right now, but it's not very good, but it'll work for now.
Okay, 'cause I know that most of the council started getting complaints and, and some concerns about pothos. Thank you, guys. Though I think you guys did an awesome job this year. There's a learning curve with snow plowing. And definitely, this was a year of lots of snow to, to plow and, and teach and break in some new guides. Thank you, though. Chief Lyra, nuisance reports? Anything you want to highlight with the council?
Oh, no, it's, uh, uh, I believe it was twenty-one nuisance violations. A lot of them could be handled right around the spot. Those that we got, uh, forwarded to, to the proper cameras, so they can, they can fight from there. Uh, other than that, there's nothing else, uh, to record, uh, for us separately. There's one that has been told to keep on nuisance continuously. I'm sorry. And that's about it. Other than that, the three of us that have had our COVID shot have been our second COVID shot on Tuesday.
Okay.
Being also the river and, uh, also alcohol.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Chief Lyra?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to take a moment and think, interim chief Lyra, uh, there were some situations with sidewalks, as we talked about at the last council meeting. Uh, given, you know, the temperatures and the snow that we had, council was supportive of being a little lenient with, uh, community members and, you know, once it started to warm up, uh, we reached out to community members, letting them know that if they did not have their sidewalks, you know, cleared off, that we would be, you know, providing them a letter of notice, and then our staff would clean it if it wasn't clear. Um, interim chief Lyra, um, took a, took a stab at it. He went out to homes. Um, he reached out to individuals themselves and did face-to-face, you know, discussion and education with them about the sidewalks. Um, he did provide me some input back on a couple of situations, and, and again, um, he took the information and, and educated, you know, our community members, you know, with about the sidewalks, uh, showing that, you know, we want to educate, we want to work with you. And so as Adam said, um, hopefully we have no more snow to worry about this year, but, um, but again, I would agree with you, mayor, between our streets and, you know, all of our departments have done a fantastic job, and, and thank you, Chief Lyra, for doing that.
You? We are out of reports, it looks like. Would entertain a motion, either.
Okay, second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?